Good evening, everyone. It is 7:00. At this time, I would like to call the meeting to order. Thank you for joining us at our 7:00 PM meeting. This is a change from in the past when we have met at 7:30. So, welcome, everyone. I'm Teri Anulowicz. I'm acting as mayor tonight. I'm Mayor Pro Tem. Mayor Bacon is unable to be with us tonight. He is not feeling well. I would like to invite Pastor Steve Lyle. Is he here?
Yes, right.
Oh, thank you, Pastor Lyle. If you would like to join us and give the invocation and lead us in the pledge to the flag.
Okay.
You can come on up to the podium.
Oh, okay. I didn't know if it was okay to cross the red tape here.
Absolutely.
Let's pray. Lord, we're so grateful for today. Thank you for the gathering here of the council. We just pray that you would bless this time. And, Lord, it's your country. It's your city. It's your... All belongs to you. And we ask that in your sovereignty and your ownership that you would give guidance and direction to these who lead us. And we pray that you would speak to their hearts. And thank you so much for their leadership. Bless them. And bless the city of Smyrna. We pray that you would continue to pour out upon us blessing upon blessing. And we thank you for giving us the freedom that we enjoy. Thank you so much for giving us this beautiful city to which to enjoy and to serve you in. And we ask now that you would bless us as we share in this time together. And it's in your name we pray. Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you so much. Pastor Lyle is the pastor at Smyrna First United Methodist Church. They're located at 1315 Concord Road, just down the street from here. And I know that if you are looking for a church home, they would love to have you there on Sunday. Thank you very much, Pastor Lyle. Next on the agenda is item two, which is Agenda Changes. We have no Agenda Changes tonight. Item three is the mayoral report. And I'm going to get that started by recognizing our honorary mayor for the evening, and that is Asia Joyner. Asia is the president of the Campbell High School Student Government Association. She is going to be graduating this spring. She recently committed to attend the University of Georgia in the fall. We are very pleased to have her tonight, and I hope everyone will give her a good welcome. Thank you so much for coming tonight, Asia. And if you'd like to introduce yourself, I'm going to hand the meeting now over to you.
Good evening, everyone. Item B, 2016-168, Smyrna Community Dancers: Introduction and Update from Mary McGeehee, artistic director and founder. At this time, I'd like to call Director Mary McGeehee to the podium to say a few words.
Hi.
Hi.
Happy Tax Day. I was pretty stressed with TurboTax, of course, last minute. And then I walked out of the community center across the street, and that cool jazz was playing on the speakers. And I felt a lot better. I thought there was a live band out there, but it's on the speakers, and it's very welcome after a long day at the tax man. I'd like to start out by introducing Lauren Overton. If Lauren would step up. Lauren is obviously young, and I need that young brain. Every now and then, she gives me a look. She never contradicts me, but she gives me that look that says, "Mary, you're not making a bit of sense." And I stop what I'm doing. I stop what I'm saying, and I start backing up. So, she's wonderful. She's helping me in a lot of different ways. She started out in the Marietta Schools where we have programs. She did so well there. I promoted her to be in charge of all the Marietta Schools, and that was no problem. Then I assigned her to the camps out there. She was extremely successful. The kids absolutely loved it. So, now I've brought her into our professional studios, which are on the second floor of the community center, of course. So, it's great to have Lauren on board. And, of course, I've got six other teachers as well. But Lauren's there with me all the time at the community center. Thank you, Lauren. I just want to start out by thanking the city council for making Smyrna the town what it is. It's an incredible city. The schools are drawing people from all over the state because the public schools are so good. People don't even need to go to private school if they live in Smyrna. All the awards you've gotten, that's the city council. And it's just the beautiful green space and the memorial next door. It's just absolutely wonderful to have. The Parks and Rec Department has been very supportive of me through the 20 years I've been here. Steve Ciaccio, Patty Bacon, they never let me down. They answer every email, and I'm a real pest. I send a lot of emails. I make a lot of phone calls. They always reply. They don't always say yes, but they always reply. They're always courteous and never get rattled by their busy, busy schedules. So, they've been just wonderful for me. And we are celebrating our 20th year as Smyrna Community Dancers is the full name. We're known as Smyrna Dancers. We're on smyrnadancers.com. But our full name is Smyrna Community Dancers because we reach out to the entire community. I started out very differently than a lot of people. I refused to take ballet when I was a child. I was busy playing tackle football with the boys. We had no sports for girls. So, I played tackle football until the boys turned 12 and started playing Little League, and then I was totally left out. I still wouldn't take ballet. And then, when I was a freshman in college at Birmingham Southern, they had a fabulous ballet program there. They had imported a director from Hungary. They rescued him from communism. He did not speak English. I went to his ballet, beginning ballet, just as a joke with a friend. And all of a sudden, he started talking in Hungarian through his translator and told me that I was in his professional dance company. That was the first ballet class I ever had. So, it was very difficult, very challenging, but I kind of got hooked on the ritual of ballet. I then became director of the ballet program for the U.S. Virgin Islands. I was in the domestic Peace Corps, which was then called Vista. So, I traveled among the three islands by the goose. We called it the goose, the airboat that landed in the water, which was a lot of fun. So, that was a great first job. And I decided, though, at the end of my term there, that I needed more of an education. So, I got a master's in fine arts, MFA. I did not want an MA. I wanted an MFA. So, I went to the University of North Carolina at Greensboro. They did not offer a master's degree at UNC Chapel Hill, nor did they at Winston-Salem, which has a wonderful school of the arts. So, I ended up at Greensboro to get my MFA. But I still decided my education was not complete until I danced in New York. So, I went up to New York and lived in Harlem and commuted from Harlem to Greenwich Village. And I would come back at midnight every night on the subway. I took three classes a day, plus I did my rehearsals for Dance Theater Workshop. I had the honor of taking class with Borishnikov because I studied at David Howard, where all the professional dancers were. My original teacher had told me that I was never allowed to take beginning ballet. I had to always take advanced professional classes. So, I have to confess, I've never had a beginning ballet class in my life, which is why I have to hire good teachers. So, I was dancing in New York, and I was taking jazz from Luigi and modern dance from Mers Cunningham. These are the masters at that time. Of course, most of them are gone by now. I then hit 30 years old. I realized I was not going any higher than a soloist because I started when I was 20. And I decided I better make some money. And my dad decided that, too. So, I'm from Alabama, from Auburn, Alabama. War Eagle, sorry. Grew up in Auburn and decided to come to Atlanta since that was a big southeastern city. Opened up the newspaper business section since I had to make money and saw who was making money. That was the stockbrokers. So, I started working the financial field, and I worked there during the Great Wall Market of 1980 to the year 2000. I became a certified financial planner. I worked at Shearson Lehman Hutton during the day and then Robinson Humphrey. And at night, I studied and became a Sutter Certified Financial Planner. Then I was able to go to Bank of America and become a top producer there. And I had a written plan, a goal, when I was 45, that I would retire when I was 50. So, I did. And that's how I ended up there. I never intended to take over this dance company. What actually happened, there were nine dancers. And my friend said, "You know, you can handle this. I know you retired, but you can handle these nine dancers." And now, all of a sudden, we've got like hundreds. So, what I'm hoping is to get some support. We came back from competition this weekend. I'm all choked up because these kids are incredible. We came back with top honors. Little Sarah, she placed. There were no other ballet dancers that placed in the competition, and she's seven years old. I'm sorry. I just got speech, totally choked up, to talk about these kids. And there is a tremendous talent pool there. What we'd like to have is a couple of night times. We are not able to use the dance studio at night because it's reserved for adults. We'd like to have a couple of nights that we can use the dance studio. And we sure would love to have some support from the city. We have got a tremendous concert planned for spring of 2017. We're going to do the Vivaldi springtime, which is somewhat overdone, but we're going to do it with a Mandarin Chinese slant. So, it's going to be somewhat original. We always do original ballets. And the last time we were at the Civic Center, Jenny T., we sold out all the tickets immediately. I allowed the parents each to have six, so we filled it up right away. And I could have scalped tickets to my own event because people were offering me ridiculous sums of money for tickets, but I could not get any more people in the building. So, we've had a good track record, and thank you.
Thank you for coming, Ms. McGeehee. With the upcoming election, May 24th, if there are any candidates who wish to give a brief statement regarding their campaign, please come to the podium now.
Good evening, Madam Mayor.
Good evening.
Madam Mayor Pro Tem, excuse me, members of the council. My name is Brendan Murphy, and I'm running for state court judge. Thank you for this opportunity. Councilmember Wilkinson, thank you for the opportunity at your town hall to meet the citizens of Ward Five. It was an amazing turnout. There were... I don't know if I'm stealing your thunder. There were 50 people on a Saturday morning, and that was before they knew her husband was bringing donuts. But back to the reason I was here. My name is Brendan Murphy. I currently serve the county as a senior assistant district attorney. I'm running for an open seat countywide to be one of your next state court judges. I've been endorsed by our elected district attorney, Vic Reynolds. I've also been endorsed by our local Fraternal Order of Police. I have a website, Vote Murphy for Judge. I don't want to take up any more time. My name is Brendan Murphy, running for state court judge, and I'd ask for your vote and your support on March... Excuse me, May 24th. Thank you.
Good evening, Madam Mayor and Madam Mayor Pro Tem. I am Kim Childs, and I am a candidate for the open seat on the Superior Court bench, the one being vacated by the retiring Adele Grubbs. I'm a business litigator. I have a practice down in Vinings, and I've been a Smyrna resident for almost 20 years. My career started off a little bit different. I was a guard over at the DeKalb County Jail before I ever even dreamed of going to law school. But I worked full-time through law school and recently was named one of the top 100 Georgia super lawyers and top 50 women's super lawyers. I'm very, very proud to be a Smyrna resident. And I also have a website. It is www.kimchildsforguard.com. And early voting starts May 2nd. Thanks so much.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Murphy and Mrs. Childs. The next item on the agenda is item number four, land issues, zonings, and annexations. Item A is 2016-132, a public hearing and zoning request, Z16-003, for the rezoning from light industrial to RAD conditional for one single-family residence on .25 acres, landlot 594, located at 2963 and 2965 Elizabeth Street, by the applicant Greg Williams. Is the applicant here?
You don't have to come up just yet. You can wait. Just... We're going to read the background first, and then you can come up.
Mr. Jones, will you please read the background?
Certainly, Madam Mayor. The issue is a rezoning from light industrial to RAD conditional. And let's see, our community development director, Ken Sudrath, is here and can provide additional details. We're going to have a public hearing. And following the public hearing, community development is recommending approval by a mayor and city council for the subject property.
This is a public hearing, so anyone wanting to speak in opposition to or wants to make public commitment, comment for this item will need to come forward now and be sworn in, and then we will call on you to speak at the appropriate time.
Anyone who'd like to speak for or against this item tonight? All right.
I would like to have... I would like to call on Councilmember Welch.
Mr. Sudrath, do you have anything to add to the background from Mr. Jones? I do have a couple slides and a PowerPoint, but basically, it is a simple request. It has to do with zoning a piece of property that's light industrial to a residential classification. In this case, it's an RAD classification, to allow the combination of two lots to have one single-family house on. This did go to the planning commission last month with a 7O approval on that. Here is a location map showing the zoning and where the subject properties are located. There is a single-family residence on it that will be removed and replaced with a new single-family. You can see that the property is highlighted in purple, which is our color for light industrial uses. And you can see next door that in the lighter green that we have residential classification next door. There will not be a need to change our future development map, that both the existing and the proposed use fall within that moderate density requirement. There is a variance or waiver built into this approval. Here we have a proposed site plan that's associated with this. There are sort of an orangey color and a green color there. This shows the 15-foot front setback from Elizabeth Street for the house, the 10-foot side yards, and then the 30-foot rear yard. What we actually have here in the orange and the green is there is issues associated with a stream in the back, and there's a state requirement and two city requirements that come into play. It's a 25-foot undisturbed buffer, then a 50-foot city-undisturbed buffer, as well as a 25-foot impervious surface area. So, the difference between that first buffer on the city and the second one has to do, one is you cannot build in, the other one is an impervious surface, meaning that you could remove trees and stuff, but you cannot put a permanent structure on there unless you go through and obtain a waiver of that request, which is part of the process tonight. But in exchange for that, you have to then meet the requirements outside of that buffer, but still on the site. That's what the green in the slide represents and how they are swapping that out. So, it's being recompensed with that so that there is a neutral, a zero-sum gain, if you will, on this. It's the proposed home elevations. This is a picture of the existing single-family structure on the subject property and the adjacent properties. Staff had recommended approval of this request. The planning commission unanimously approved it as well. Again, the standard conditions apply, which have to do with the composition of the home and stormwater management, the tree ordinance and landscaping plans, et cetera, on that. The special conditions we've... I've taken you through regarding the front side and rear yards on that. The home has to have at least 1,800 square feet minimum, and the new proposed home shall not exceed two stories in height. We talked about the mitigation. That was the orange and the green that I showed you. That area is actually around 924 square feet. It is a one-to-one mitigation plan, which they have met, and the city engineer has reviewed and signed off on. If this request is approved, then we have the standard condition that it has to be in substantial compliance with the plan that has been submitted, not only for the site plan, but the next one, as well as the elevations. With that, I'm happy to answer any question, but it basically is taking an unused old industrial, limited, light industrial property and turn it into a residential property on Elizabeth Street, which is adjacent to a lot of residential.
Thank you, sir. For the record, this property is located in Ward Three. Ms. Anulowicz has asked that I address it this evening. Are there any other questions from councilmembers?
I have a question for Kim. So, this is two lots, and they're going to combine the lots for the one home.
Yes, that's correct.
Okay. That's what I wanted to do. Thank you.
Anything else? Hearing no other questions from council, I'd like to make a motion to approve zoning request, Z16-003.
First, we have a public hearing.
I'm sorry. Excuse me.
I'd like to ask anyone else who wants to speak to come forward. Please state your name, spell your last name, state your address for the official records, and what comments you have to make.
And if the applicant would like to come forward at this time, you may also do so. Would you like to tell us anything about the project or share anything beyond what Mr. Sudrath reviewed? And it's fine if you don't want to or if you don't feel it's necessary.
You got sworn in.
No. Well, he's the applicant.
I'm the applicant. My name is Greg Williams.
Jeffrey, does it need to be sworn in? Okay. Okay. Thank you. Thank you.
My name is Greg Williams, W-I-L-L-I-A-M-S, from Woodstock, Georgia. I was asked to design a home for this lot by the owner and subsequently to apply for the rezoning, to combine the two lots into one, as he stated. The home that's there now is abandoned, and there's another adjacent home that's abandoned. But all the other homes to the north are newer, very nice homes, and so this would be in keeping with those, that style of homes in that neighborhood. And this would be an addition and an enhancement to the neighborhood.
Mr. Williams, I know that some of the residents had some questions about construction traffic, things like that, that I believe were addressed during the planning and zoning process. Is that correct?
Yes. The neighbor most... Right across the creek to the north had concerns about us blocking because Elizabeth Street is one-way right there. And there's plenty of room on beyond his driveway and down in front of this home for construction traffic and on the lot itself, so there shouldn't be an issue.
Thank you. Is there any other questions or comments for the applicant?
Yes, Mr. Williams.
Yes.
Have you designed or built a home in Smyrna in the past?
I've designed a lot of homes. I can't think of a specific one in Smyrna. It's off the top of my head, but designed a lot of homes in Cobb County and Atlanta area over the last 30 years.
We're always encouraging quality, so we hope this works to your benefit and for your applicant, the client.
Thank you.
Any further questions?
I have a question on the site plan that we're looking at, but it's actually the house across that it looks like it's partially in the street. Is that...
Yeah, that little strip in between is an actual easement. And it's over the easement, but I don't really know. And there's apparently some question about, in some of the deeds, the older deeds, this little easement was referred to as Elizabeth Street Extension, as a street.
Oh, okay.
And so, there's some question about who owns it or whether it's a street or whether it's just an easement. But we'll get to the bottom of that during the process, I guess.
Okay. Thank you.
Any further questions? I'd like to close the hearing at this time. Mr. Welch.
Hearing no other questions, the hearing is closed. I'd like to make a motion to approve zoning request, Z16-003, rezoning from light industrial to RAD conditional for one single-family residence, .25 acres, and landlot 594, 2963, and 2965 Elizabeth Street, by the applicant, Mr. Greg Williams.
Second.
There is a motion and a second. Is there any further discussion? The motion passes 6-0. Item five is privileged license, and there are none. Item six, formal businesses. Under formal businesses, item A is the approval to accept a Livable Centers Initiative grant from the Atlanta Regional Commission, ARC, in the amount of $100,000 and authorize the mayor to execute the grant agreement and related documents on behalf of the city of Smyrna. Mr. Jones, will you please read the background?
Certainly. The original LCI study for Smyrna was completed and adopted by the mayor and council in 2003. And as required by ARC, there have to be five-year updates. These were submitted and approved in years 2008 and 2013. In October of 2015, ARC notified us of a subsequent round of LCI funding. And in December 15, the city submitted an application requesting a grant of $120,000, which also contained a 20% match, and that match would have been $30,000. We were notified in April that we did receive funding, but we received funding in a reduced amount. We received $100,000 in funding, which also reduced our pro-rata share of the match to $25,000. This $25,000 match is part of the CIP budget for the Community Development Department in the upcoming 2017 budget. And I've spoken to Councilman Norton about this, and I believe he had some comments on some of the details that go into the study. he had some comments on some of the details that go into the, the study.
I do, thank you. This is a much-needed study in the Spring Road corridor between 41 and Atlanta Road, and it's studying land use and transportation. With everything going on with the Braves' development, it is very important. I wanted to thank the staff for putting together such a great application. It was very detailed. A lot of work went into that, so much appreciated. I wanted to read briefly the, the goal of the study so that everybody understands what we're trying to achieve here, and I've had some questions from constituents about this, in particular, that corridor over the last few weeks. "The study will include an analysis of existing conditions, both positive and negative, that impact the ability to create a livable, pedestrian-friendly environment that encourages mixed-use development, socioeconomic diversity, a range of housing options, and sustainable economic development opportunities. The city will seek solutions that effectively address safety, accessibility, and connectivity issues in the study area. Evaluation of existing transportation infrastructure and land use issues will be conducted. Effective, fiscally responsible, and financially feasible scenarios will be formulated to produce realistic recommendations for future public and private investments that support the goals and objectives of the Livable Centers Initiative and the City of Smyrna." Hope that gives you a better idea of what we're trying to do. If there's no other, does anybody have any questions? At this point, I'd like to make a motion for approval. Item 6A, 2016-153, approval to accept a livable centers initiative grant from the Atlanta Regional Commission, A-R-C, in the amount of $100,000 and authorize the mayor to execute the grant agreement and related documents on behalf of the City of Smyrna.
There is a motion and a second. Is there any further discussion? All in favor, please vote. The motion passes 6-0.
Oh, wait, we went down, we went back down to... It did register and then it unregistered it, because it was six, and then it went back to five. Okay.
Item B is the approval of ordinances 2016-05, to amend the City of Smyrna Code of Ordinances, Ordinances, Chapter 2, Article 1, Section 2-3, non-governmental use of city property. Mr. Jones, will you please read the background?
Yes, ma'am, mayor. There are nine of these that are coming before council. This is the first of nine, and the current city code of ordinance became effective in 1977, and council, over time, has amended portions of these over the last 39 years. So what's before council tonight is, is a series of the cleanups, and for each one of these, I would like to explain what is being removed from the current ordinance and then what's going to be added to it prior to the vote, and I understand from council that we'll take each one of these separately. The one that you just referred to, currently, this ordinance requires council committee chairs to approve non-governmental use of any meeting space within the city or use of any recreational facilities or parks. What we'd like to do is strike out that the committee chair will have the authority thereof and insert that the department head or designated shall have control thereof. And we would like to add a requirement for obtaining any necessary permits and pay, and payments of usage fees for those facilities as they apply.
Mr. Fennel.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. As the administrator said, this is the first of nine changes to bring our code of ordinances up to speed. This one just merely refers to, as he mentioned, the department heads versus committee chairs. It was a practice in past before we more professionalized our staff to have the city council committee chair be the de facto department head. We have graduated now to a more professional organization, thereby we should allow the department heads to do their job and not interfere with that nor hold sway. So with that, Mr. Mayor, Madam Mayor, I move approval of ordinance 2016-05 to amend the Code of Ordinances, Chapter 2, Article 1, Section 2.3, non-governmental use of city property. Second.
There is a motion and a second presented. Is there any further discussion? All in favor, please vote. The motion passes 6-0. Item C is the approval of ordinance 2016-06, to amend the City of Smyrna Code of Ordinances, Chapter 2, Article 2, Division 2, Section 2-47, special meetings calling notice. Mr. Jones, will you please read the background?
Yes, ma'am. The current ordinance requires special meeting notice to be communicated in a mailed or hand-delivered written notice to the mayor and council's home address. When this was drafted, it didn't take into account the, the evolution of technology. Obviously, today, we have email, cell phones, texting, and there's lots of ways to, to deliver notice. What we'd like to do is, the amendment before council will strike out one word and add one sentence. Strike out language requiring notice by certified mail or hand delivery and insert language related to allow for delivery of mail, of notice by mail, email, and insert language to not require notice if the mayor, all council members, and the city administrator are all present when the special meeting is called.
Mr. Fennel.
Having heard that background and not having any conflict with the open records, open meetings laws, those are all still in place. Proper notifications of publications are carefully considered and protected here, but this is just moving from Pony Express to the current technology usage of notifications, and we appreciate this change being brought forward. With that, I move approval of ordinance 2016-06.
There is a motion and a second presented. Is there any further discussion?
Yes, I would like to just mention something that we discussed when we discussed this particular change, and I just want to make sure that when, that everyone is present, it means present in the room, because sometimes we may have a meeting and someone may walk out to the restroom or something like that, so I just want to make sure that that's clear, that we all have to be present in the room.
Is there any further discussion? All in favor, please vote. The motion is passed 6-0. Item D is the approval of ordinance 2016-07, to amend the City of Smyrna Code of Ordinances, Chapter 2, Article 2, Division 2, Section 2-51, parliamentary rules. Mr. Jones, will you please read the background?
Yes, ma'am. This one's fairly straightforward. The current ordinance requires that we use the 1961 version of the Roberts Rules of Order. This is not even on file at the library. The oldest one we could find, I believe, was 1966. What we'd like to do is strike out the year 1961 and in its place, put the most current edition.
Mr. Fennel.
If you aren't asleep yet, you will be soon. This is the, the part of the detail work that we are required to do, but to update our ordinance, I move approval of ordinance 2016-07 as described. Second.
There is a motion and a second presented. Is there any further discussion? All in favor, please vote. The motion is passed 6-0. Item E is for the approval of ordinance 2016-08, to amend the City of Smyrna Code of Ordinances, Chapter 2, Article 2, Division 4, Section 2-115, purpose. Mr. Jones, will you please read the background?
Sure. The current ordinance refers to our municipal as Recorder's Court, and this is a dated reference to those courts. What we'd like to do is strike out the word Recorder's and insert the word Municipal to refer to our current charter.
Ms. Bluestein.
Yes, this, this has to do with the caseload of the municipal court and how it's grown over the years, and this is reflective of that increase in the growth. So at this time, I would like to make a motion to approve ordinance 2016-08, approval of the ordinance 2016-08, to amend the City of Smyrna Code of Ordinances, Chapter 2, Article 2, Division 4, Section 2-115, entitled Purpose.
There is a motion and a second presented. Is there any further questions? All in favor, please vote. The motion passes 6-0. Item F is for the approval of ordinance 2016-09, to amend the City of Smyrna Code of Ordinances, Chapter 6, Article 1, Section 6-2, alcohol beverages definitions.
This ordinance states closed functions or private parties may only occur at the community center or, quote, "the senior center." So what we'd like to do is clean up two things here. First is add to the list the Bronner Hall, Taylor Bronner House, Tolleson Park Dayroom, Aunt Fanny's Cabin, and the Reed House, recent property the, the city acquired that will be brought in as a, as a venue shortly. And we would also like to correctly name the senior center as the Wolf Adult Recreation Center.
Mr. Stonier.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. As I think it should be noted, and when you look at this list, obviously, when this was done, we have added a lot of meeting space, and those who've been paying attention recently, it is very hard to get a meeting space in Smyrna. I, myself, as the city councilman, had a problem recently just trying to get a meeting together for some residents, which is great. It's great that we have this much use. So with that being said, I'd like to ask for a motion to approve ordinance 2016-09, to amend the City of Smyrna Code of Ordinances, Chapter 6, Article 1, Section 6-2, alcohol beverage definitions.
Second.
There is a motion and a second presented. Is there any further discussion? All in favor, please vote. The motion is passed 6-0. Item G is for the approval of ordinance 2016-10, to amend the City of Smyrna Code of Ordinances, Chapter 6, Article 3, Division 1, Section 10-74, certain contracts, other prohibited activities. Mr. Jones, will you please read the background?
Certainly. This one is entertaining. The ordinance contains some restrictions for nonprofit organizations and restrictions on bingo games. The amendment before council will correct an error in the time restriction. Presently, the way the ordinance reads, you have to play bingo from 6:00 PM until noon the next day, and what we want to is correct the time error and restrict those, those bingo games close off at midnight.
We're not going to the same bingo games.
Cruel and unusual punishment.
Mr. Stonier.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. You know, I'm very glad to see this changed, because my grandfather used to run the bingo game at the Legion, at the old Legion back in the days, and thank goodness he was never arrested for obviously legally operating before these hours. So with that said, Madam Chair, or Madam Mayor, I ask for, make a motion to approve ordinance 2016-10, to amend the City of Smyrna Code of Ordinances, Chapter 6, Article 3, Division 1, Section 10-74, certain contracts and other prohibitive activities.
Second.
There is a motion, there is a motion and a second presented. Is there any further discussion? All in favor, please vote. The motion passed 6-0. Item H is the approval for, the approval of ordinance 2016-11, to amend the City of Smyrna Code of Ordinances, Chapter 70, Article 2, Division 1, Section 70-29, meetings, days and place designated, calling special meetings. Mr. Jones, will you please read the background?
This particular ordinance dealt with the Parks and Recreation Commission, and it, it mandated that they have meetings on specific dates. Currently, the second Thursday in February, April, June, August, and December, and what we'd like to do is, since that's not being followed, change it to what we are doing, which is to strike out the specific language and allow them the flexibility to schedule their bimonthly meetings as they see fit.
Ms. Wilkinson.
Thank you. Yes, that, and this, changing this ordinance makes a lot of sense, because this is a group of volunteers, and requiring that they meet on the fourth Tuesday, bimonthly, in certain months of the year is kind of restrictive, so we believe that this will make it much more flexible for those volunteers. So at this time, I would like to move to approve ordinance 2016-11, to amend the City of Smyrna Code of Ordinances, Chapter 70, Article 2, Division 1, Section 70-29, meetings, days and place designated, called special meetings.
There is a motion and a second presented. Is there any further questions? All in favor, please vote. The motion is passed 6-0. Item I is for the approval of ordinance 2016-12, to amend the City of Smyrna Code of Ordinances, Chapter 102, Article 1, Section 102-5, authority to promulgate rules and regulations governing service generally, non-refundable service connection charges. Mr. Jones, will you please read the background?
Certainly. The current ordinance empowers the Water, Sewage, and Sanitation Committee to develop procedures, regs, and fees for water, sewer, and sanitation services, but we don't have a Water, Sewage, and Sanitation Committee. That's long since been changed, and what we'd like to do is strike out the Water, Sewage, and Sanitation Committee and replace it with Public Works and Finance Departments. And additionally, we would like that the Public Works Director and the Finance Director make recommendations to council regarding actions on procedures and regulations and fees, and just note that this does not explicitly give these departments unilateral authority to make these decisions independent of council.
Mr. Welch.
I'm gonna make this simple and just make a motion to approve the ordinance 2016-12, to amend the City of Smyrna Code of Ordinances, Chapter 102, Article 1, Section 102-5, for the authority to promulgate rules and regulations governing service generally, non-refundable service connection charges.
Second.
There is a motion and a second presented. Is there any further discussion? All in favor, please vote. The motion is passed 6-0. Item J is the approval of ordinance 2016-13, to amend the City of Smyrna Code of Ordinances, Chapter 102, Article 1, Section 102-13, emergency water restrictions. Mr. Jones, will you please read the background?
Last one. This ordinance authorizes the Water Committee to set hours and terms for any outdoor water use after the mayor and council declare that an emergency water restriction is necessary. We would like to strike out the term "Water Committee" and insert the Public Works Department as they're referred to today. The ordinance also requires that it be posted outside of a facility that's no longer in existence, which is the city hall on Bank Street, and place the correct, replace the incorrect street address with the current city hall address.
Mr. Welch.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. But before I make this motion, let me address the citizens just a minute. For those of you that are just here to hear the city council meeting tonight, we appreciate you staying around for this. This is, I'll, I'll admit, it sounds rather boring, but this is some of the, it's important that these ordinances get updated and addressed on a, on a periodic basis, and that's what we've done here tonight and will continue to do throughout this year. So I applaud you for hanging around. With that, I'll make a motion to approve the ordinance 2016-13, to amend the City of Smyrna Code of Ordinances, Chapter 102, Article 1, Section 102-13, emergency water restrictions. Restrictions.
There is a motion and a second presented. Is there any further discussion? All in favor, please vote. The motion is passed 6-0.
I would like to take just a second and thank Amy Snyder, Government Management Fellow. She has spent an awful lot of time going through these ordinances and updating them to 2016. And Amy, I really appreciate all the effort that you put into this. There will be others forthcoming that have a little more meat to them, but these were the low-hanging fruit that we're able to take care of tonight.
And if we keep this up, she'll change careers.
Thank you. Item 7, Commercial Building Permits, There Are None. Item 8 is the Consent Agenda. Mr. Jones, will you please read the Consent Agenda for council's approval?
Certainly. We have a couple, so we have four of these. One, the first one, item A, is approval of the April 4th mayor and council meeting minutes. The next item is an award of RFP 16-34, and that's a Cobb Park Restroom Innovations, to the lowest bidder, P.E. Structures and Associates, for $82,449.05. These are, these are CDFG, that's a CDFG-funded project. The next item is the approval to purchase one equipped Ford Explorer Patrol Vehicle from the police department's FY16 operating budget, total cost of $35,853.61. And lastly is approval to use council chambers on Sunday, April 24, 2016, from 4:00 to 7:00 p.m. for Vinings North Neighborhood Association Meeting. Sponsor was Councilman Doug Stoner.
Move approval of the Consent Agenda.
Time out. You missed D.
Oh, sorry.
I apologize. I skipped one. We have one other item, and that's approval to enter into a management services agreement for Smyrna Food Truck Tuesday with JRM Services. This is a $0.00 impact, and we also request the mayor have the authority to sign and execute related documents. And for clarification on the $0.00 impact, this contract will be funded through the sale of sponsorships that will be on, there'll be the responsibility of JRM Management Services. So there won't be any city tax dollars spent on this particular consultant, but rather there, it's on them to raise the funds to fund their own contract.
I have a motion and a second. Is there any further discussion? All in favor, please vote. The motion is passed 6-0. Item 9 is Committee Reports. I'd like to ask Mr. Derek Norton to start.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I do have a report this evening. I wanted to say, as my first few months in office and as public safety chair, I've spent some time learning the ins and outs of how the police and fire department protect and serve our community, as most recently evidenced last night with the fire at Country Park, and I'll let Andrea talk a little bit more about that, but their response was fantastic. I asked Chief Lee and Chief Akry to give me some numbers. I was curious about volume, what are they, how, what are they dealing with on a day-to-day basis? And the numbers that they gave me were shocking, and I wanted to just share with you so that you know how much they're doing for you and for our community. 1,662, that's the total number of calls for service from the fire department just since January 1st through yesterday. 1,095 of those were EMS and rescue-related. So anytime you have a health issue or a car accident or what have you, 1,095 times they've been called since January 1. 931 number of arrests from Smyrna Police Department since January 1. 7,574 citations issued by the police department since January 1. And this one really got me. 19,144, that's the total calls for service for everything from the police department, January 1st through April 17th. So I just, and this is in addition to the countless hours of training that they do and all of the time they spend in the community doing events. I just want to say how great our fire and police departments are, and if you have a chance, please see a police officer or fire personnel and thank them for all that they do. The other thing I wanted to mention, you may have noticed a little bit of activity on Spring Road from Argyle down to 41. I know there's been several calls to me about what's going on. I would just ask, over the next several months, there's going to be a lot of activity there. It's going to be difficult to navigate. Please be cautious as you go through that corridor. We have a lot going on. There's one thing coming up soon in the next few months is traffic signal synchronization. I've been asked a lot about that. That'll help a lot with the traffic flow going through that area. The system that they're putting in there is communicate, the lights communicate with each other. I could try to explain it, but I would botch it, but it's something way beyond me. But that'll really help, and just call me if you ever have any questions about what's going on there. With that, I yield. Thank you.
Ms. Andrea Bluestein.
Before I talk about the police department and the fire department, I want to just remind you that I'm having a Ward 2 meeting, May 7th, from 10:00 to noon at the library. And we're going to talk about traffic in the area of Ward 2. So I hope that all of you will be able to attend. Last night about 10:00, I received a phone call and about four text messages in rapid succession telling me that one of the condominium buildings was on fire. I thought, well, I'll go, I threw some clothes on real quick, and I went over there, and I thought, when I got there, it was absolutely positively stunning. The whole front side of one of the buildings was engulfed in flames. They were trying to get one of the residents that lived on the top floor, they were bringing her down the ladder. It was such a coordinated effort between, we had three fire trucks on our property, one fire truck on Countryside's property, numerous police cars, ambulances, EMTs, you name it, we had it. I'm happy to report that we, the building is probably going to be zeroed out, but no one was hurt. Everyone got out, include, and they even managed to find two cats that were lost during all this upheaval. So now we have the pets back, too. I can't say enough about the effort of the fire department and also the police department last night to keep the situation as calm as they could keep it because, obviously, the people that live in that building, eight families were displaced. And luckily, there was one unit that was not occupied, and it's a 10-unit building. And it was just, it was unbelievable. This is like something that you see on TV, but you don't think that you'll ever really have to live it. And I was living it as a person who lives there, but I can't imagine what it was like for the ones that were watching that building go up, and it was their home. So anyway, say a prayer for them. And we're going to, we bonded together, and we're going to hopefully get, move on together with this thing. So thank you so much, and with that, I yield.
Mr. Corky Welch.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Just a very brief shout-out to Ann Kirk and the Keith Smyrna Beautiful Team for the Great American Cleanup this past weekend. I have not heard the statistics on it, but I saw a lot of people out cleaning up sides of the roads in Smyrna. Secondly, a, another shout-out to a group that is not a department in the city, but Smyrna Art and Cultural Council. I believe this past weekend was one of their first concerts that they've promoted and put on. And this, this group, which is a spin-off from a Smyrna vision, continues to be, do phenomenal things. If you need to know a little bit more about them, get on Facebook and look up Smyrna Art and Cultural Council. They're advertising everything on there, and they'll keep you up to date with everything that's going on. But they're a very active group and going to do some great things here in the city. With that, I yield.
Ms. Susan Wilkinson.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. So I want to talk about several things. I had a community meeting for Ward 5 on Saturday, and there was a great turnout, and I want to thank everybody that came out, and it was, I think it was a great meeting. Also, I want to encourage the people of Ward 5 and other citizens as well to come to the public information meeting that's going to be Tuesday, April the 26th, at the community center from 6:00 to 8:00. I'll be there, and also the engineers from Croy will be there, and most likely, I think our own city engineer will be there as well to answer questions about the Wendy Hill Road Boulevard concept. So it's a very important project that's going on and through the middle of Ward 5. So I encourage Ward 5 to come and try to, you know, look at the plan and get a feel for it. So with that, let's see, the next thing I'd like to announce is the tickets go on sale for the concert series. They go on sale May 16th, and you can get those at the Wolf Recreation Center, and that is again, May 16th. With that, I yield.
Mr. Doug Stoner.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I just wanted to do a quick update in the sense, unfortunately, I was not able to attend the committee, the whole meeting last week, but my fellow members of the council got an update concerning our automatic traffic management system. And this has been an issue, particularly my ward, concerning Atlanta Road, and of course, I know in other wards, too, of what the status is. And for those who are not familiar with that, we are basically synchronizing and coordinating all our intersections in Smyrna through a very sophisticated computer system. And based on what the report was, even though I was not there, my conversations with our traffic engineer, hopefully, we're going to have this system finally up and running come this fall, based on current projections, in the sense of getting the system tested out properly, which is going to have a positive impact. But I do just want to let citizens know that we do live in a metropolitan area with lots of folks, and yes, this will help, but this is not going to get rid of traffic. In fact, I always tell people that if you don't have a traffic problem, then you have a lot of other issues going on in your community. So this will help with citizens on Atlanta Road and Spring Road in particular. I know that Councilman Norton down there has had issues, obviously, in the traffic on Spring Road beyond just the construction. On top of that, obviously, as we move forward on these issues beyond that, I want to also do a shout-out to Ken Sutterith, our Community Development Director, who's been working very closely with Cobb County, and specifically concerning with the construction, everything going on with the Braves, and also concerning other issues in the sense of a lot of development coming, you know, luckily for Councilmen down in Ward 1, that's happening over in that area and making sure that the council's fully informed of those issues and preparing us and keeping us informed in our conversations with Cobb County and coordinating, not just on development, but also on traffic issues in the sense as we move forward. So again, I just want to thank the both, both gentlemen for giving an update to our council, and obviously keeping an eye that for us, that when we do talk to our constituents, at least that we're updated and informed and can inform them properly. Besides that, Madam Mayor, I have nothing else to report. I yield.
Mr. Ron Finnell.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I have three items to report. I appreciate those folks who came out to the town hall that I hosted for Bob Ott last week down at Whitfield Academy. We had about 60-some-odd folks attend. We were there for two and a half hours. Every question that was asked was answered as best we could. Bob Ott brought a strong complement of staff from the county to make sure all the particular questions were addressed, including the head of public safety, the Department of Transportation, Internal Administration, and others. So it was an informative night, and I appreciate having Commissioner Ott do that in Ward 7, and to continue to make sure that we stay on top of mutually important questions for our joint constituents. I published my newsletter last week. That's the second one of the year. If you're not on that newsletter list, I'll happily add it. It's the right price. It's free. You can go to ronfinnell@me.com or contact me through the city website, and I'll get you on that newsletter list. But hopefully, that is beneficial to outline what all, what all's happening in Smyrna, at least from our perspective based in Ward 7. Thirdly, as finance chair, we're about to get into the budget process where we're going to have some public hearings and an opportunity for you to see how we put together our priorities financially for the resources that the taxpayers provide us. We are very proud of the fact that we have a strong financial position, a conservative, and a highly rated, we have a AAA bond rating. It's not an accident, it's a concerted effort by our team, our department heads, and our administration to make sure that they give us the best information in this council, make sure to maintain the highest degree of openness and integrity, plus financial responsibility on that. And we'll be, over the next several weeks, bringing you the details of that budget so you can understand what's in there and how it goes. And I want to congratulate our new mayor. Thank you again for another stellar job. Our former mayor, Max Bacon, will be sad that he no longer sits there, but I'm glad to have traded him in for you for the day. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Finnell. Mr. Jones?
The only thing I would bring up is to remind everyone about the Spring Jonkle Festival that'll begin Saturday morning with the Jonkle Jog at 6:00 a.m., and the Jonkle Festival will last Saturday and Sunday.
Mr. Tucker, do you have anything to add this evening?
No report tonight, Madam Mayor.
Ms. Graham, anything to add this evening?
Yes, Madam Mayor. I'd like to remind everyone about the upcoming election, May the 24th. Voter registration deadline is April the 26th, so if you have not registered to vote, please try to do that before April the 26th. We also have advanced voting beginning May the 2nd, and that will happen at the main office on Whitlock Avenue. And then there will also be satellite voting locations throughout Cobb County. You can find that information on either the Secretary of State's website or the CobbCountyElections.org website. You can also find that information on our website, smyrnacity.com. And that's all I have. Thank you.
Item 10 is Show Cause Hearings, There Are None. Item 11 is Citizen Input. I'd like to first call up Alex Bakri, 3459 Shawnee Trail, for comments.
I'd like to continue my comments from the last meeting on our difficulty with the inconsistencies of the police department on illegally parked cars violating, that are parked on the grass as well as in the no-parking zones on the streets. After the last meeting, we had another house, two houses, from what I spoke on the last one. Four nights in a row that was illegally parked on the grass, and the police officers came out, no warning, no anything. Four nights in a row. The fourth night is what got me. When I checked with dispatch to see if there was any action taken, the officer notified dispatch to say that if I have any issues on that, to contact the city marshal. I don't understand that. That's passing the buck to me. City marshals work during the day. But I called the city marshal on my say-so. He left him a warning, and the problem has now been solved. Simple. I don't understand, also, by the way, the city marshal said, if it happens again, I've got to get out there at night and take pictures so he can see them and go from there. So that's more work. Why I, these officers, again, will not enforce the code, at least with a warning. And there is a solution to this, and I hope the city manager, Michael, or the police committee, get these courtesy cards out that other municipalities have. I understand Smyrna used to have courtesy cards, a checklist of any information, garage door open or what have you, but also covers illegally parked cars, et cetera. And if each officer, I've talked to some of the traffic officers, they don't carry them in their cars. So if you've got an illegally parked car, it's very easy to put a check mark on it and put it on the car and leave. The old way is, you have to fill out a whole ticker with personal information and then check off a warning. Those courtesy cards, I was unaware of, and I was made aware- Those courtesy cards, I was unaware of, and I was made aware of that actually tonight. So it's good if you could check on it to see that each vehicle does have courtesy, a couple, two, three courtesy cards for each day, that they see any violations, they can easily just put it on the windshield. The reason, another reason I was inspired tonight to speak, Cobb County was on Channel 2 last week, and the story was that Cobb County is now clamping down on code violations. And I was very impressed, quite a coverage story on that, and Smyrnashers do the same. These are clear codes that parking on grass or illegally parked cars, and some of the officers, they say it's their discretion. I don't agree with that, and the police committee, or Michael, hopefully, will get to have clear policy that everyone's on the same page with this, because when we have a problem, a warning usually works, and to see that now I got to go through the city marshal makes no sense at all. It's the principle, it's those signs mean something, they should be enforced, that's the right thing to do, and it's not happening. Thank you. And I'd like to have someone give me an explanation when they find out why different supervisors say it's the discretion of the officer. Should be clear, it has in the past, but legally, it's been a communications problem. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Bakary. At this time, I would like to call up Cynthia Lawrence, 1350 Overlook Cove, Southeast, for comments.
Thank you so much, Madam Mayor, and it is very delightful, as a retired teacher, to see a student going through the exercise of being able to understand what it is like to be a civil servant. In Mr. Bakary's comments, I don't necessarily agree with all that he has said, I am sure that all that he has said has taken place, however, I would like to acknowledge the fact that Mr. Norton, who happens to be my ward representative, is on the Public Safety Committee, and I'm really grateful to know that, because I think we have a very, very fine police force, and they have always responded, and I have lived here in excess of 30 years, they have always responded, not only quickly, promptly, but thoroughly. Which brings me to one of the reasons why I wanted to bring this before council this evening. I do not have any specifics for what I'm going to say, but I hope it is something that you will seriously consider, and that is, a lot of times, civil servants, particularly those that are put in harm's way on the part, on our behalf as citizens, very oftentimes are not properly compensated. And I have heard rumors to the fact that Cobb County does not do a good job of compensating. Well, I've lived in Smyrna a long time, and I want to make sure my policemen are well compensated for the good work that they do. And this brings up the issue with the SunTrust Park. We are going to be facing a lot of additional needs from our uniform policemen, whether or not Cobb County takes their part and covers, as Mr. Ott mentioned to us last week in the town hall meeting, and thank you for mentioning that, Mr. Finnell. He did say that Cobb County would be working very closely with Smyrna, while that's great, however, Cobb County is not going to be policing our residential areas, which are very close to this. In fact, I live very, very close to the stadium, and so I have a great concern about things such as homeless people living under some of the new bridges, and in addition to that, the traffic flow, and even though we don't have that park in place yet, I have to tell you, living so, I apologize, I have a few more things to say. Do I have to come back? Is it all right?
You can go on for another minute or so.
Thank you very much. The difficulties in certain traffic intersections, such as 41 and Spring Road, but Argyle Elementary School in particular, because it is an elementary school, and we've only got another five weeks of school, there's a lot of foot traffic in that area, and what I had mentioned before, and Mr. Norton and I have talked about this as well, is I'd really like to see a few more uniforms out there, particularly when our children are out there. It's of great concern to me, and I'd like to see them safe. One other thing that I would like to address regarding the stadium, Mr. Norton, if I could just make mention of this to you, you might put it on your checklist to think about. Of the things that Mr. Ott had mentioned to us in that meeting last week was the fact that street vendors would be restricted to the walkway, however, we currently have street vendors for the children's ice cream trucks, and I would like not for that to be restricted, I'd like for the children to have the ice cream trucks. Granted, that should not flow over into the 41 Parkway area, it should stay in the residential areas, but I hope that is taken under advisement regarding that. And one thing that, Mr. Stoner, that you had mentioned regarding the synchronization of the traffic light system, I would be interested to know how that is, that might be handled regarding the volume flow, and the reason I mention this is, having lived in this area such a long time, one of the greatest difficulties at 41, particularly where the Cumberland, I don't know if it's called, Cumberland Parkway, it used to be Hargrove Road crosses there, because this, because people run it, they run that red light, they block up that intersection summer after summer after summer, people trying to get home from work, it's a very, very congested area, and it may very well be that, no matter what system we have, it's not going to be able to adjust for those kinds of traffic flows, particularly during baseball season.
Ms. Lawrence?
I'm sorry.
I'm sorry, we've given you about two and a half extra minutes, but I would like to invite you to stay and talk further with us after the meeting about any of your additional concerns.
Thank you. If I could just mention one other thing, and that is, we have a conservative group that meets at Rev Coffee on Wednesday mornings at 8:30, and Mr. Larry Savage, who is in the chairman, Cobb chairman race, is going to be meeting with us this Wednesday morning at 8:30 at Rev Coffee, and thank you for your patience, I appreciate it.
Thank you, Ms. Lawrence.
Thank you again, Ms. Lawrence, for your comments. At this time, I would like to recognize and thank my family for sitting in on this council meeting, Sister Autumn Joyner, Mom Juanita Farr, and Dad Roland Joyner, and I would also like to thank two of my peers that are in the back that came to sit on the council meeting as well.
And I want to thank the parents for doing a great job bringing her this far along, she's doing great.[1768.26][1768.26](Applause).
If there is no other business to be brought before this body, I call this meeting adjourned at 8:18.
Well done.
Thank you.[1782.76][1782.76](Laughter).[1783.76]